And we've talked about this just briefly a few minutes ago, but what innovative ideas and incentives do you propose to attract grocery stores in District 3? Grocery stores in District 3, we're gonna start with Ms. Compton.
Businesses make decisions as to where they're going to locate based on statistics, pure and simple. If you don't have the number of people, you don't have a certain income level, you're only going to get a certain type of grocery store that's interested in the area. It's going to take some additional development, some additional bodies, houses, apartments. I know people don't want to hear that, but that is the reality of what you're looking at. It's a business decision. It's about making money. Now, what I have always advocated, and I've thought this for years, some of the largest chains, they pretty much so, I believe they need to come up with some concepts that are tailored to fit a community and the statistics that they look at in certain areas.
Ms. Compton, that's why you've seen different concepts being... And Ms. Scott.
Okay, so my plan for our district, far as addressing the grocery stores, addressing businesses in our area, is to kind of go more on what she said, is that yes, you need business in order to have growth, okay? But you can judge or you can gauge how much business is done in your community and how it benefits your community, okay? So my goal is, yes, we need, excuse me, we need grocery stores, yes. But what our plan to do is build an incentive package with developers who come into our community. And one of the incentives is they have to be invested in our nonprofits in our community, that are heavily involved in our community, okay? Believe it or not, 3,000 children live homeless today in the city of Dallas. I went to a meeting today, 3,000, okay? And the city of Dallas only gives this organization $50,000 to assist the 3,000 people, okay? So I want to build those gaps between businesses, nonprofits, and our community.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you. Mr. Peters.
All right, so some innovative ideas I have concerning the addressing the food desert situation in Dallas, if, or District 3, is establishing a food call-off. Instead of just getting a regular store in here, we could reach out to the community, have people who actually live in the community buy memberships to this, or pay for memberships for the store, and then that could help pay for it. And also you can get food delivered straight to your doorstep, and that would be part of the package. There's a store called Urban Acres by the Bishop Arts District. This is one example like this. They also contract with local farmers and local gardeners. This is another thing that I would like to do, incentivize people in the community to be a part of that process, and also reach out to the community to build this grocery store and incentivize people here to get our produce local. Because we can get all these big stores here, but the reality is, they're poisoning the food. We have GMO food.
Ms. Peters.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Thomas.
Innovative ideas and incentives. Number one is the District 3 Grocery Store Task Force. Looking at different ways and different options in order to bring quality, excess quality, fresh foods and vegetables into the dish. I don't know how many of you had a chance to go out to Bunton Farms. If you haven't, you should go. Thank you. Go and see Bunton Farms. Darren Babcock has done amazing things over there. Matter of fact, I talked with Darren a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "I would love to be able to build Bunton Farms in District 3." I said, "Let's sit down, let's talk about it." Incentives. We have to get our Economic Development Director in the room. Recently, and many of you who live in District 3 in this area know, we had conversations with Ann's Food Market. We're still in conversations about that. But we're seeing what we can do, what incentive the city can offer. We offered $100,000, $100,000 through the South Dallas Fair Park Opportunity Fund. That money went for Bunton Farms, and that money went to build Bunton Farms, which is now a place where people in South Dallas Fair Park can come, sit down, eat, and have a comfortable environment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The next question was almost pervasive to two different people, so I'm gonna kind of mash them together for one. "District 3 has ample affordable housing now." This is a question from the others. "What are you willing to do to prevent substandard developers, builders, property owners from entering District 3, lowering home values, and at the same time encourage developers to build quality homes for mid-to-upper-income residents in District 4?" Quality housing. Okay, District 3, I'm saying, oh, that's habit. District 3, sorry. "What are you willing to do to prevent substandard developers, builders, and property owners from entering District 3 and lowering the existing home values? And how would you encourage developers to build quality homes for mid-to-upper-income residents in District 3?" We're going to start with Mr. Scott. I'm sorry, Ms. Scott, I'm sorry, Ms. Scott. Wait a minute. I'm gonna get it. So, excuse me, I used to be a teacher, so I'm talking loud.
So, to answer the question, basically what I was planning on doing is creating certain agreements with developers that want to build in our area. So if we want to protect the home value, which I understand, I am a homeowner myself in Mountain Creek. I understand the importance of your home value. So, excuse me, so to protect your area, I will plan on building, or plan on working with developers, working with local entities who are interested in our area to create guidelines. So if they want to live, if they want to build in our area, they want to provide homes in our area, there are certain guidelines that they would have to follow in order to provide those services. Thank you.
Mr. Peters.
So to maintain the property value in our districts, what I would do concerning developers trying to come here and develop, what we would do is we would create requirements and just pretty much, you know, build a culture and a standard, create a standard. If you want to do business in District 3, then there's a certain quality of business that we want here, and there will be certain requirements. And also for people who want to develop here and also add to the value, we would also incentivize them, of course, and continue to increase the value in our community so more business will come down to District 3.
All right, it's really simple. The one ace that council members have is we approve or disapprove zoning changes. So one, we have to make sure when a zoning case comes that we have a commissioner who's gonna be neighborhood-focused, neighborhood-friendly, and have neighborhood interests first and foremost in mind. We went through this a couple of years ago. I'd like Craig to share, because he's been a big advocate for making sure that we don't have substandard housing developers, and many others, Raymond, many others, in our district. And so making sure at the zone, because we can kill a case at the plan at the zoning level before it even gets to the council. And so we want to make sure that whoever that builder is has incredible reputation. Our housing director has to make sure that we have certain standards in our housing policy to make sure that anyone who's looking to do any kind of housing, any kind of building, any kind of development, has a quality reputation. We had a case a couple of years ago where I said, "No on the zoning." They came back and they planted it, so we're holding them accountable to do what they said they're gonna do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Compton.
The first thing that I would do is that I talk to the neighborhood to explain what's being proposed, and find out from that neighborhood what they want to see, what type of building they want to happen in their neighborhood. In terms of substandard developers, personally, I wouldn't deal with them at all. I'd be looking for credible developers, people who have come in, built a project, and they've kept their promises to the neighborhood, they've kept their properties up. If they wanted to change ownership, that, they basically came to the neighborhood and introduced that new landlord, if you will, coming in. But I believe that basically, substandard housing, we don't need that. We've got that based on just the aging of properties that were new at one time, and they kept being sold and sold and sold over and over again. And now we have a bunch of absentee landlords.
Thank you, Ms. Compton. Is there a next question? I'm looking at some statistics, and we all know that the senior population is growing exponentially. We're in the age of the baby boomers. And so the question is, what initiatives can be put in place to assist residents over 65 years of age so that they can stay within code compliance and regulations? And I'm gonna add onto this, just to make sure that they are able to maintain their homes and remain in their homes. 65 years and older, what initiatives?
Okay, so speaking with some of the residents in District 3, I did receive certain concerns because certain residents that I visited, she said, "Well, my neighbors are parking all in my driveway, or close to my driveway, I can't back out, or the music is loud, or, you know, I'm getting older, I can't do these things on my own." I would want to provide programs with the city of Dallas to kind of assist our elderly that kind of follow along with either our nonprofits or with city initiatives, which we do have. We have community block grants that can assist different organizations who actually help our communities. So the money is there, it's just how we allocate those resources to help our elderly and protect them. Thank you.
Mr. Peters.
Well, one thing, DART decided to end the paratransit services for the elders and decide to contract with, you know, a third party such as Uber and Lyft and things of that nature. So I think, you know, I would want to bring those services back to our elders so that they can get to work, get to appointments, get to the doctor, things of that nature. Other services, such as, you know, simple things like having ramps and handicap services at the house, having lights in their neighborhoods, in their, excuse me, in their yards. So these are some of the things that, you know, the elders have been making aware to me, but I'm not gonna have to do it, things of that nature.
Mr. Thomas.
As chair of the Human and Social Needs Committee, the Office of Senior Affairs and Senior Affairs Commission reports to my committee. And so we started a series of listening sessions. We had two here. The only council member that hosted two listening sessions for our senior affairs. Mr. John Johnson back there is our representative on the Senior Affairs Commission. He's also vice chair. Thank you for your service. We have a very aggressive group of seniors who own the Senior Affairs Commission. They develop a very aggressive agenda, and so in this upcoming budget, the one thing that we don't have is we don't have a place within the Office of Senior Affairs where they have a contact person, one person who's the point of contact for our community. Whenever you call this particular office, this particular person. So in the upcoming budget, I'm gonna allocate, I'm gonna recommend we allocate $75,000 to $100,000 for someone in the Office of Senior Affairs who's that point person, who can make sure that if our seniors are having issues with code, then they're communicating that information to our city manager, TC Broadnax. So when our code inspectors go out, they're mindful of that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Compton.
We have an aging population in Dallas in certain areas. Their kids are grown, gone. They want to live in the community that they've been in for years. And they have a lot of challenges trying to live on fixed incomes. One of the things that has not been mentioned, basically by anybody who's been sitting here, is that we're talking about tax dollars, but there's a limited amount of tax dollars that can go into some of these programs. We need to look more towards our corporate population, not only in Texas, but in the country, to get them to step up and partner with some of the public entities to provide solutions for seniors. Because we're all invested in the senior population, be it a mother, father, brother, sister.
All right, this is a really good question. Everybody listen to this. "There's a significant gap where emergency calls were reported from the southern section." A significant gap in the sense of urgency for emergency calls reported from the southern section. "How would you improve emergency response times to better protect our neighborhoods?" This is a safety issue, okay? What would you do, what would you propose to improve emergency response times to better protect our neighborhoods?
One thing I would do is, you know, look at the technology that the officers are using, or dispatches are using, they're saying that, you know, that the equipment is outdated and things of that nature. So we would look at that, and also beyond that, we would incentivize the officers to do their job, hold them responsible to these times. I don't see why there would be a response time delay. It seems like these officers are not interested, or they're caught up in their time. So if we need to put more officers on the streets, or whatever it is, I would like to work with a police chief or whoever to get more information on this and, you know, provide options, because we need to be safe in our community.
Mr. Thomas.
If we go into emergency response time, first we gotta look at two different areas. We got police, and we got fire rescue. We just had a briefing last Monday. Where the response time for Dallas Fire Rescue is at a level lower than it's been in several years. We have a new fire chief. He rolled out his vision and his plan. I'm supporting him 110%. As far as police, one of the issues that we have is we have DPD officers who are taking phone calls. Those officers need to be out on the street. So we need to take civilians, train those civilians, let them be the 311 and 911 operators who can facilitate those calls, get that information out, and have those who are trained and skilled out on the street. And that way we have more officers who are on the street, and those officers can respond in a much faster time period.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Compton.
I'm going to say this one more time. One of the things that we need to focus on is improving basic services. The bottom line is that the city of Dallas does not have enough police officers to adequately serve the population that we have. Another thing that I think is a real big problem with the Dallas Police Department, if you look at history, there are some times of the year that are peak times where you're getting a lot of calls. One of them is New Year's Eve. I've been calling for years on New Year's Eve with all the gunfire. Now, you would think if you looked at the history, you know the areas where there's a problem. So the officers would already be prepared to go to those locations because it is a hazard. Some people don't think it is, but it is. But the bottom line is that until Dallas solves its police number, we're going to have a problem.
Ms. Scott, here, Ms. Scott.
Okay, everyone say $3 billion. $3 billion. That's how much the city of Dallas gets in taxes and other revenues. That's how much they generate every year, $3 billion. Now, you just heard them paying $96,000 to train these police officers to patrol your area, okay? Now, do you want to pay $96,000 for people to be on their phone? Or do you want to pay $96,000 so that you can get a police post station in your neighborhood to help deter crime? So that you can have a local police station or a local, excuse me, fire department in your area? Why is it that you, as the citizens, as the taxpayers, have to wait a significant amount of time in order to receive services that you paid for? Okay, those are the things that I'm helping to address. My plan is, when elected, my plan is to not only provide police post stations in your area, but provide better service in your area. No, our police officers shouldn't not be on their phones, but I should not have to pay $96,000 for training for them to be on their phone.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Recent developments in yet another case of campaign finance violations as well as admitted bribes from formal council persons are in the news. What steps will you take to implement or to curb if or when you are approached by investors with propositions for personal and/or financial support? What steps will you take personally to curb what's been going on at City Hall? Okay, we're gonna start with Mr. Thomas.
Real simple, just say no. Just say no. It's that simple. Just say no. I've been in office for four years, and not one time has anyone accused me of taking any campaign, any money from any developer. And it will not happen, because I just say no. And I would tell you, don't ever come back to my office again. It's really that simple. You have to have the integrity to say, "No, we're public servants. We're here to serve the community. We're not here to enrich ourselves." I served, this is my full-time job, I do this 24 hours, 7 days a week. You would never imagine how many people inbox me, on Facebook, text me, all hours of the night. And I'm expected to respond, because I am a full-time city council member. You don't have to worry about me taking anybody's money. If you're a developer, if you want to do business in District 3, you can come and you can invest in District 3. And that way you show that you're really committed to see people in District 3 do better. Just say no.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Ms. Compton.
You know, Councilor Thomas, that was a very impassioned speech. But if you look at your campaign finance report, there are a lot of developers on there. And I know them, and I know what they do. But the bottom line, well, I don't know about the rule of him to business and what was in the newspaper. I'm not here to throw stones, but some of the people that I saw on that report, I know what they do. And that's fine, own it, you know? Just own it. But the bottom line, he's right. All you have to do is say no. One of the problems that some people in Dallas, Texas have with me is that I'm honest, okay? I don't live a lavish lifestyle. I'm not looking to. All I want to do is help the citizens improve their lives. But I cannot be the policeman and the ethics police for some people. It's an individual decision.
Thank you. I want to make sure that we answer the questions as they are proposed, okay?
So to answer your question, the answer would be no, okay? When I take money from an investor that doesn't aim to serve my community, I am not benefiting you, okay? My answer is always no. If it's not to benefit you, your children, your community, then it has no place in our community. And I have no problem hosting town hall meetings, so let the law know that. In addition, our comment says that, well, you may have to prove it, okay? Someone say $2,250 for me? $2,250? That's the amount that you're allowed to receive from an organization. Uh, $2,500, excuse me. $2,500, that's the highest you're able to receive. Why is it that Raul Hemington was able to donate three separate transactions of $3,000 to avoid that rule, okay? You deserve better, okay? And it's not about what you used to, it's about what you deserve. And that is what I'm fighting for.
Thank you so much, Ms. Scott. Mr. Peters.
Like I said, just say no. This is nothing I'm interested in. If anybody knows me outside of, you know, what I'm doing here, they know my platform is completely against, you know, turning against the people, the working-class people. So I have the working-class people and the proletariat class people's best interest in mind. I would be going outside of myself and everything I stand for to put developers or anybody over us, you know what I'm saying? So that's not my background. So you would not have to worry about me taking illegal donations like some of the city council members have. And we have evidence, we've been looking at campaign finance reports. Mine will always be available, so just say no.
What services, what ideas, services can you offer to nonprofit organizations to better serve the homeless and less fortunate in our community? What you do, it's specifically asked for nonprofit organizations, but I'm asking, what would you do, what would you do to better serve the homeless and less fortunate communities in District 3?
What I would do, I would try to connect them to organizations, corporations, that fulfill the needs that they have, and I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
So kind of to explain what I said before, my idea, or my initiative, is to build partnerships with local nonprofits that are heavily involved in our community and have the contingency to prove how involved they are, okay? Recently, a few years ago, the Dallas, the city of Dallas invested in those huts. Then you see them off of I-30, I know you see them, okay? Six, okay, $6 million, okay. I want to help our homeless community. Not everyone is homeless because they chose to be homeless. They're homeless because they reached a certain point in their life where they needed assistance. And the city of Dallas, like I said, the city of Dallas has those resources, has the money to provide additional incentives for those nonprofits so that they continue to provide services like Dallas Life or VOGA All Code. Those entities like that serve our, not only serve our children who are facing homeless situations, but our families as well.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you. So some, all right, some services I would like to introduce are giving homeless people jobs, things of that nature, and then also before that, preventing homelessness. You know, having efforts to what we prevent, prevent it before it happens. Things like implementing apprenticeship programs, supporting our formerly incarcerated individuals with apprenticeship programs, job training, so they won't, you know, they won't have to worry about recidivism or going back, you know, to curric- activities that would land them back, you know, in a non-favorable position. But also, like I said, jobs for the homeless. San Diego's doing it, they're getting the homeless people to pick up trash and things of that nature, and pay them for these things. And I think, you know, that's something we could possibly implement.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
As it relates to the homeless, one, the city of Dallas has not identified one homeless encampment in District 3, okay? There may be individuals who are homeless, but there are no homeless encampments in District 3, okay? Secondly, in terms of individuals who are homeless, the city of Dallas already has a plan, a comprehensive plan, three-part comprehensive plan to address homelessness. Number one, individuals who are homeless, there are over 50 spaces that are available at some of the shelters in Dallas for anyone who's homeless to stay for 90 days. During those 90 days, they'll get roundaround services. They'll get healthcare assessment. They'll get assessment for job opportunities and things of that nature. Matter of fact, the city of Dallas has a job program for homelessness. We rolled it out maybe about six months ago. One of the challenges, and I told our city manager this, we've got to do a better job of telling our story as far as the city of Dallas. City of Dallas is doing a great job. We have staff who work extremely hard, but we don't do a good job of telling our story. So there are many programs to provide help for the homeless, and we partner with nonprofits already.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We're gonna do one more question, and then we'll start with our wrap-up, okay? Last week, the city council voted to reinstate the city's teen curfew that expired this past January. We'll give some background on this in case the audience doesn't know. Persons below the age of 16 and younger cannot be in a public place or in the premises of any establishment between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Now, since this has already been passed... between eleven P.M. and six A.M. Now, since this has already been passed by the current city council, I'm going to ask this question. If you had opportunity, if you could do something different, what would you do to decriminalize the teen curfew? What would you do to decriminalize a teen curfew? What alternatives would you propose?
Okay, so, look, I was a former educator at Spruce High School. Is everyone familiar with that school? It's located in Pleasant Grove. And one thing that we saw a lot of is, yes, students leave school, students walking around, kids are walking around at night. You know, it's not that the kid is bad. It's not that he's a criminal. It's just, he doesn't have anything to do. I mean, if you're, or he's working, you know, a lot of my kids worked just to support their families because their mother worked and they had to work. And they had brothers and sisters that they had to provide for because their mothers worked, and they didn't have a father. I mean, there should be, if it was up to me, the timeframe that you have, eleven P.M. to six A.M., we all know that our, we all know that our children are not going to follow that. So, what you're doing is you're basically enticing them to say, basically try me.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Well, it was made to my attention that there was an opportunity to decriminalize this to where in a fine, the parent about fifty dollars or so opposed to criminalizing the child. And this option was actually denied, which I thought was a, you know, a good idea opposed to criminalizing you, putting them in jail or giving them warrants. And basically, this is the school-to-prison pipeline right in our face that our city council members place in effect. This is only going to strain the working-class people. This is another opportunity to pass stop and frisk here in Dallas, Texas, in our youth. So, what you're doing is criminalizing a generation. You're putting a generation in jail, and they won't be attributed by their contributions to society, but they're being criminalized before they made adulthood. So, I would, I would reverse that. I would try to work to reverse that. But I think the initial option to fine the parents fifty dollars opposed to criminalize the child was a good option.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Thomas?
Let's get some facts on the table, okay? First of all, this has been, was in effect for almost thirty years, okay? In nineteen ninety-one is when this went to effect. It was community-led. It wasn't from the city council. It wasn't from the city attorneys. There were neighborhood leaders like Betty Colbert and Edna Pemberton, who led this effort and actually drew up the ordinance. And so, those were the first people I talked with when this came up. Actually, if our city manager, he fell on the sword, would have informed the council that this was coming up, we could have addressed it a long time ago, okay? Now, let's talk about the ordinance. One of the things that's in the ordinance is the fact that you get two written, we're talking about ten to sixteen-year-olds, okay? I had two community meetings. One, at breakfast, we have a meeting with the neighborhood leaders. Two, we had a community meeting at Louie's. And at that, both meetings, both of the, we had a consensus that we want to maintain this curfew. Because if my kid is out and I don't know about it after eleven o'clock, I want him or her brought back home. In almost thirty years, we've only had one case, one case.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Compton?
I was asked, I was asked about this, and Councilor Thomas is right. Teen curfew has been on the books for a good long while. The problem has been over the years is how the law is being enforced. And in a lot of instances, it's been selectively enforced. And that's not the only law. It depends on, you know, who they're dealing with, what they're doing and so forth. And they go back to some of these old laws. I don't see any kid with a criminal record or a certain label on them if it's not absolutely necessary. But we also have to understand that we've got some kids, based on their background, environment, that it's nothing anyone can do with them. We can put them in programs. We can try to rehabilitate them. And Lord knows, that's what I want to see happen. But at the end of the day, I think the parent is responsible.
Thank you very much for your response.
We're done. I'm going to do closing remarks. And thank you so much for, again, everyone being here this evening, coming out to hear these candidates for District Three. Everyone cares about what's going on in District Three. And we're gonna, you started the last one. So, we're going to start with Mr. Peters, who followed through the ear. Again, we're going to go from one minute to two minutes, up to two minutes. You don't have to take the whole two minutes, but I know some of you can talk the whole two minutes.
Ten minutes.
Try to keep it. I'll do two, okay? Thank you, sir.
Well, once again, my name is Devontae D. Peters. I appreciate everyone's time here. I appreciate Heritage Joe Cliff for putting this together. I want to represent you because I feel like I am the one who's going to get the job done. I'm honest. I have a moral compass. I'm all about integrity and working for the working-class people and not putting our issues under a big business and big corporation. So, if you want a real progressive change in Dallas, if you want somebody who's going to be honest, who's going to be here for you and not take donations illegally, I'm your man, Devontae D. Peters, D-three. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peters. Mr. Thomas?
First, I want to say thank you to Heritage Joe Cliff. This has probably been one of the most informative candidate forums that I've participated in. And so, I'll leave you with this. Experienced matters.
Amen.
Experienced matters. You need someone who has the knowledge, who has the temperament, who has the ability to represent your interests on a daily basis on the Dallas City Council. You need someone who knows how to count to eight. You have to be able to work with other people. You have to be able to get along with other people. You have to be able to, in some cases, compromise in order to make sure that those things that are most important to you are done. I've had the privilege and the honor to represent you on the Dallas City Council. I thank you for being here. I thank you for your support up to this point. I ask that you continue to be engaged in this process. I think after hearing this for almost an hour and a half, the choice is clear. I think beyond a shadow of a doubt, we know that you need someone who has the knowledge, the experience, and the temperament to serve you on the Dallas City Council. My name is Casey Thomas. I'm your council member. I ask for your vote and your support. I'm number three on the ballot, number three for District Three. Thank you for coming out.
Amen. Mr. Thomas? Ms. Compton?
I want to thank you each for coming out tonight and listening to each candidate. And I hope you will think, give strong consideration to the candidate that you're most interested in. I'd also like to take a moment to address some things that were said. The gentleman back there, I heard, I saw your face when I said about, made a comment about these kids. Trust me, my wild child, and I love her to death, but no matter what the family did to steer her in one direction, she was determined to make poor choices and go in another direction. So, I had to get out of the enabling business in order to help her. And today, she's an upstanding citizen. But those are the things I'm talking about. Now, I'm interested in serving as the council person for this district because I want to make sure that all of District Three is represented. What I see right now is only about a fourth of the district that are receiving the resources and the representation that they deserve. We need somebody who can fairly and evenly manage resources, look for resources, and help these communities take care of just their basic services and the infrastructure need. And that's what I want to do, is to focus on the needs of the citizens that actually live in District Three. And they pay taxes, but their money is basically going to other areas. The last thing I want to address about those campaign contributions, it's not illegal to take contributions from developers.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott? Okay, thank you.
All right. Louis, come here. This young man that is coming up here is the brother that I raised by myself, okay? And when I look at him and I look at you all, I am fighting for you, to work for you, to represent you. Yes, I can count to eight, and I can count to three billion, okay? And I know that resources can be better allocated for you and your families. I know there are resources out there to assist you when you are in need. He follows instructions too. But I'm, I'm fighting to represent you, okay? I'm fighting to keep you informed. I'm fighting to be the transparency that you deserve. I am fighting to constantly communicate with you. It's never going to be a send me an email and I'll get one of my staff members to get with you. No, if I have to, I'll come meet you at your house, which I have done. Sat down, had dinner, had a conversation with their families. When I say that I am genuinely concerned, I am genuinely concerned, not for the money, but for you and for the resources that you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Scott. And please, let's continue with a round of applause for all of the candidates. Great. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate the tone and the passion that you give one another and to our audience members.